Signing the Penderly County Service District for Fire Protection to Item 9.2. The Third Amendment is adding Item 9.7, the 24, 25 NC ACC Workers Comp and LNP Insurance Renewal Documents, and the Last Amendment is moving Item 11.1, which is Appointment of the Clerk, to Item 22.1. And are there any other amendments at this time? I think that is all of them. Hearing those amendments, is there a motion to approve the amendments?
Motion to approve with Item 9.2 now becoming 9.3, 9.3 becoming 9.2, adding Item 9.7 pertaining to insurance renewal and Item 11.1 to be heard as Item 22.1.
Have a motion in second, all is in favor, raise your right hand. Public comment. I don't have the sheet.
At this time, there is one individual signed up for public comment, Richard Newkirk from 9600 Shiloh Road, and he wants to comment on Item 9.3.
Which is now 9.2.
Which is now 9.2?
Yes.
All right, if you can come forward, I'll read this as he's coming forward. Speakers will be acknowledged by the Board Chairperson in the order in which the name appears on the sheet. Speaker shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity, and the discussion of personnel and other matters deemed confidential by law. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The Board Chair will decide the time, and we've already done that. So three minutes, you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for being here. My name is Richard Newkirk at 9600 Shiloh Road, Idaho, North Carolina, in Pender County. At the June 3 meeting, you chose to postpone the resolution defining the Penderly County Service Department District for Fire Protection. I want to thank you for that decision, as it communicates at least to me that you are actually interested in hearing what I and other members of the community had to say. At that time, I shared several concerns, all with one common denominator, recommended decisions with no supporting documentation to help me and others like me understand the process used. I still believe that it's crucial, if this is about us, if this is still public, and for those reasons, I looked at the PDF document I believe was submitted to each commissioners for this meeting. I expected to see documentation that addressed my concerns. I didn't see that. I also hope that that would be an explanation of the process that showed what other fire departments aside from Penderly were included in the discussion. For those reasons, I highly recommend and trust that you will consider postponing resolution now 9.2 until there is proper documentation available to the public to support the proposed change. Again, thank you for the privilege to share my concerns.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Newkirk.
Board members, you've had a chance to review the consent agenda. Is there any items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda? Not, I have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second, all is in favor, raise your right hand. 9.1, Appointment to the Cape Fear Housing Continuum of Cape Fear Board. Sue Nissaba?
Ready? I'm Sue Solomon, Pender County Housing Authority, and I'm the Director, and I'm here regarding a position, a vacant position that we've had for quite a long time with the Cape Fear Housing Continuum of Care. We'd like to go ahead and have Sarah Fulton fill that vacant position. The Continuum of Care, they go ahead and they allocate monies to the homeless and to the housing authorities, and without us having a voice on the board, Pender County has been left out for seven years.
Board members, you have the request for the appointment of Sarah Fulton to this board. Is there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? All is in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Sarah has a new duty, another duty. Thank you, Sarah.
Congratulations, Sarah.
We are at 9.2, which was 9.3.
Resolution.
Resolution defining the Penderly County Service District for Fire Protection. Fire Marshal?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Again, this will be a presentation that two of you have seen. Welcome back, and welcome, Mr. Burton. Penderly County Service District. So the goal of the new Penderly County Service District, and if I could, this service district will be just like other service districts. It's nothing different other than naming it. So just as we have the Duplin-Pender one that Wallace covers, just as we have Pender Central that Burgault covers, it'll be another district just like this. The goal of this is to continually improve fire protection services across the county. I've had some discussions back and forth with Commissioner Newton about making sure that we have the same level of service across the county, whether that be through a combination of departments, volunteer, paid, what have you. We have to, and I have to, as a Fire Marshal, assure that we are providing the same coverage for every citizen that pays taxes in this county. So the new service district will include both the current Penderly Service District and the Shiloh-Columbia portion of the county, commonly referred to as Shiloh Fire District. Service will be provided by Penderly Volunteer Fire Department. We did send out public notice mailers to everyone who lived in the Shiloh-Columbia area, as well as everyone who lived in the Penderly area, and when I say "area," I mean that's what's listed on their property tax card. Our report to the board wasn't made available to the public. It's located in the County Manager's Office, and tax rates on this will remain the same. Since I've had the last time to present this, I've had some conversation. The way that we went about this, there's a whole list that the State Office of the Fire Marshal requires in order, which is mandated by general statute in order to change a district. So we followed each one of those steps by step to go down through this process. Tax rates for Shiloh-Columbia, current Shiloh-Columbia residents are not going to change. This is just a map of the two districts. They butt up to one another. The potential benefits for this, and the reasons that I say potential is because it hasn't been approved, hasn't been approved by the board yet as a resolution, shorter response times for fires and emergencies, more effective suppression of fires, better protection for life, property, and public safety, lower property insurance rates for some areas, and when I say "some areas," Penderly residents that are in Penderly proper currently, their tax rates will not change.
What is their current tax rate?
The current tax rate is 10 cent. Correct, Chief? 10 cent in the Penderly area is what they pay currently.
What is their ISO rating?
Their ISO rating is a five, four, excuse me, four, better than a five. ISO ratings, if you're not familiar, they go from 10 all the way down to 1. 10 is absolute worst, 1 is the best. There's not very many 1s in the state. There's a lot of 2s, and the average number is 3.
And explain how that affects the?
So the way that affects property owners, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Newton.
Please explain how the ISO rating affects the homeowner's insurance.
Yes, ma'am. So currently, the ISO rating in the Shiloh-Columbia District is a 7. The highest number of ISO that you can have with fire coverage is a 9. So currently, they are at a 7. We did some study back and forth with local insurance agencies, and when I say "we," I mean myself and Emergency Management Director Batson. The average savings to reduce from a 7 to a 4 is $1,200 on the minimum per year per household with an improved ISO rating. So that's what I mean when I say lower property insurance rates.
So what, just for general information purposes, the factors that go into the ISO rating is response time, coverage, what goes into consideration on an annual basis? I think they can come under reconsideration annually, but what is considered when an ISO rating for a fire district is evaluated?
So during that time, an Office of the State Fire Marshal, ISO Insurance Assessor, Investigator, Inspector, which have you, they come in and they pull training records, they pull personnel records, they pull equipment records such as pump testing on trucks, hose lines that are used for suppression, hose testing, ladder testing, the water points that are available in the area, whether that be a hydrant or a static water point or a tanker task force. And Pender County does have a tanker task force. We utilize that on the western side as well as the eastern side of the county. Depending upon the type of the call, it's an automatic dispatch. So those are the main things that it is looking for. You get points awarded in each category, depending upon, they have a checklist, depending upon what you have received for the year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that insurance is going up every year now. That's a big, do you think, for insurance? I think it's going up again this year, or maybe this week, but all the insurance is going up again, so.
Yes, sir. I have nothing left on my screen right now.
You might have to knock on the door to see if anybody, there it is.
That basically wraps it up.
No, sir, that public comment, what was that, beginning of the meeting? Sorry. No, sir.
So will the Shiloh Volunteer Fire Department building be utilized for the storage of equipment, be staffed with personnel on a 24-hour-a-day basis?
Yes, ma'am. That station will be operable 24/7.
When do we anticipate having that station up and running?
So, back in talks again with my ISO Inspector, Lee Kennedy, from the Office of the State Fire Marshal. We had a conversation last week. He said, "As soon as possible, as soon as is allowed, there will be a truck staffed at that station 24/7."
Possible, allowed, what does that mean? Because we live in that area. We want a fire truck. We want responders. We want to make sure that that building is up and running. When our houses go up in smoke, there's somebody there for us. When is possible?
So... There will be a truck there as soon as this resolution is approved and premises are available in order to put that staff in that truck there at that station. And I expect that to be this month, within the next two weeks or so.
Yes. Ms. Burton, first off, full disclosure, Ms. Burton is not related to me. She has to answer for that every day, and I told her that's not a bad thing, but can you shed some light on a little bit of the backstory of what led you to do your report and what got us here? I mean, I understand there was litigation, you might not be able to speak to that, but what in essence maybe got us to where we are? And I apologize, I wasn't on the board.
I'm sorry.
There's a certain confidentiality component to the agreement that was made by the parties, which included the Board of Shiloh-Columbia Volunteer Fire Department and the county. And that ended the litigation with that agreement that with our findings being such, part of the agreement was that the facilities would be turned over to the county.
And when you say truck, is that an engine company?
Yes, sir.
Three man, four man?
Two manned engine company that we can guarantee, and then backfilled by volunteers from the Penderly area.
Or mutual aid response.
Or mutual aid response, yes, sir.
And what, I got a small background in that.
Yes, sir.
20 years. So my biggest concern is for the citizens in that area. I want them to be able to have an effective and efficient response for fire rescue EMS. Majority of their calls are going to be assisted with EMS calls, as everybody does. That's my biggest concern, is I want the folks that live in that area to feel just like I do in our area in Scottsdale or anywhere else.
Yes, sir, I should have premised. Coverage for the Shiloh-Columbia Fire District has not ceased throughout this entire time. We have some remarkable departments in this county that have stepped up to the plate without question and responded every single time within the applicable time limits, and you understand what I'm talking about there. They have not been above the national average nor above the state average. We've had response as soon as the call has rolled out. There have been Burgault engines, there have been Atkinson engines, there have been Harrell's engines from across the county that have nothing to do with our county nor reap any reward at all.
And Penderly?
Penderly has been there on the dime every time. Even Pender Fire and EMS has stepped up. We've had Wallace Fire Engines there. So fire coverage for that area has never ceased this entire time. That was the main mission of this goal, was to be able to assure and ensure that we are protecting our citizens and our property across the county on all levels, and that has not ceased, and it will not cease.
Ms. Burton, I didn't mean to intimate in any way, shape, form, or fashion that wasn't covered, but I knew what was going on. I wanted, the questions that I was asking you was for the benefit of those here and for the benefit of those who are watching this meeting online. So I wanted confirmation and assurances from you.
Absolutely, and I welcome all of these questions.
One of the most basic questions that I have been asked from citizens in my community was, "What are we going to do without a fire station?" What we're not going to do without a fire station. We're going to equip it and we're going to man it, just as it had been.
And I apologize for not being able to answer some of those questions forthwith based off of the status that I am in with litigation.
Understand. Understand.
Has anyone, maybe from your office or Penderly or anyone spoke with maybe Mr. Newkirk, Dr. Newkirk, or anyone just to sort of answer questions he may have or his neighbors may have?
No one from my department has. We haven't been able to.
And just for clarification purposes, Dr. Newkirk is on the board.
Shiloh.
Shiloh-Columbia. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get someone from IT to fix that screen that keeps bouncing from, I think it's very distracting when it goes from page to page? 9.3, Approval of the 2024-25 Budget Ordinance. Mr. Blue.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Meg Blue, Pender County Finance Director, for those of you who have not met yet. I'm here to present, this may be a little deja vu for some, the budget highlights for this year's budget. We are, we had our public hearing at the last meeting. There were not any relevant signups to the budget per se, but we will go through this, and if you have questions, by all means, please ask them. I'm happy to answer, and if I don't have an answer, I will get you one. So our main focuses for the budget, goals and priorities for this year, were number one, to continue to retain and recruit quality county employees. As we all know, inflation and all of the above have been a real struggle for county employees and as well as private sector employees. So we're doing what we can to try and close that gap a little bit. There's a little bit of realignment in this budget to reorganize to meet future growth opportunities, some departmental changes, which we'll get into in a few minutes. Capital projects, this would be to continue to fund the capital development for future growth. We have a lot of major projects coming up, and the funding to go to fund those projects has been a top priority as well, as maintaining the current tax rate. This budget does not suggest a tax rate in the county tax rate and the EMS tax rate, and there are only a couple of fire districts that propose increases, which we'll get into in a minute. This just goes over the total for the general fund, the special revenue funds, and the enterprise funds. The general fund is made up of, you can see the fund numbers there, but it's basically all of the general government functions, public safety, that includes some education dollars because that's where we pay the schools from, health, DSS, Sheriff's Office, basically all of the above that are not utilities and solid waste, and housing. Housing is also an enterprise fund. Special revenue funds, this is where we fund our EMS and fire through their tax. It's a special revenue fund set up to accept the tax dollars and pay them back out to those contracts. That also includes the TDA in the special revenue funds, and then the enterprise funds would be your waters, water and sewer and solid waste, as well as housing. Just to go over the general fund revenues at a very high level, this just shows you kind of where the changes will be. Most of it is in your interest earned because over COVID, interest rates dropped to nearly nothing, and so our budget in the past was pretty low, and we have significantly increased our cash balances, as well as interest rates have gone back up. So there's a lot of it there, and then our sales tax is a little over a million dollar increase, and this is just the general fund portion of sales tax. We have some sales tax that is committed to schools that is not included in this number here. And then intergovernmental revenues, that's mostly your federal and state funding for health and DSS. This shows an allocation of a dollar of tax. You can see here that 40% of your dollar goes towards education, 24% to public safety, 18% to general government, 12% to health and human services, 3% to cultural and recreational, 2 to economic development, and 1% to debt service. I will say that the health and human services is a larger portion of our budget. They just have a lot of federal and state revenues that go into it, which would make it a smaller portion of your tax dollar. Here are some of the department reorganizations. Nothing super shattering, but planning and inspections have been combined for several years, and these are proposed to be split back into two departments, which would add the creation of an inspections Director position. This one was mostly because the functions of those departments, while dependent on each other, are largely not the same. One does inspections and one does planning according for the future, so. 911 Dispatch, although remaining with the Sheriff's Office, is enhanced with some new positions and the creation of a Communications Director. And the Fire Marshal's Office has moved to a standalone department where previously it was included with emergency management. As far as personnel positions go, these are the new positions and the reclassifications. 26.9, again, might sound like a funny number of new positions to add, but it has a lot to do with maybe a full-time position becoming, or a part-time position becoming full-time or vice versa, really. Or some partial position, maybe at 60% or 80% becoming 100%, as well as sometimes we start a position in the middle of the year so that we don't have so many people coming on into one department at the same time. It makes it an easier onboarding process for the department and for the new hire. Eight of those are sheriff's deputies, one is a detective, and four are detention officers. In the past, the sheriff's, or in the recent past, the Sheriff's Office has had a lot of success with filling their vacancies. So in the past, where they maybe couldn't ask for deputy positions to be created because they had vacancies, they've been able to fill those, and so these deputies are much needed throughout the county, and they are welcome additions to our staff. Same with the detention officers, they've had a hard time keeping those filled, but they've done a great job lately, so we're hoping that that helps them as well with retention of their current employees. Director and Deputy Director Positions, I mentioned the inspections Director, and then there's a Deputy Director of Facilities and Maintenance and Deputy Directors of Social Services, mostly for succession planning on the social services. I think Wes has a pretty good plan with that. And then there's some other general fund positions, three in tax, one in grounds, one in parks and rec, and then the enterprise funds have a new three-person crew so that they can address multiple concerns at the same time, because with one crew, you can only do one thing at a time. A chief water treatment plant operator and a solid waste admin. Part-time to full-time is one elections and one HR position. Didn't go from part-time to full-time, it was a creative part-time position. EMS and fire, this just goes over the general fund contribution to EMS and fire. Again, I mentioned their tax rates remain the same, except the town of Atkinson increased their tax rate from 7 to 8 cents, I believe, and Penderly-Duplin went from 4.7 cents to 7 cents because that's what the town of Wallace pays. And that Penderly-Duplin is serviced by the town of Wallace, it's a very little piece of our pie, I guess you could say.
Well, that development that they're incorporating for service?
No, this was already existing.
Oh, just the general?
Yeah, this was already existing, yes, yes. Is it, they, I think they only get like $11,000 a year, which, you know, we appreciate what they do for us.
Agnes sisters.
That's right. Other departments and their funding, this is the general fund portion of the Health Department, DSS, and Pender County Schools. The Health Department was largely replacing COVID money that had been operating some of our functions in the past. DSS is mostly due to Medicaid expansion, which we all know and love at this point. Pender County Schools operating, I want to point out that this number, the schools come to us every year with a, basically a maintain and an advance services number, and we try to do what we can. They're a huge portion of our budget, and they will continue to be forever and ever. We are also dedicating the 9.25 cents to their, to pay for the school bond debt in the future, which is not included here, that's additional. But this 3.8 rate here?
For clarification purposes, in the 2023, 2024 budget, last budget season, we did a 9.25 increase.
Yes.
To the tax base.
Yes. Yes.
And all of that funding attributable to that increase that was approved last year. Is going into escrow for debt services on the school bond and that's still going to be the case.
So escrow is a very technical term, which is not actually in escrow, but it is in a separate fund, yes.
And that money will be exclusively used.
That's correct.
The school bond.
That's correct, that's in fund twenty-eight, so it's a transfer from fund ten to fund twenty-eight um for the school bond.
So other than for payment of the school bond, there was no uh increase in. Basic taxes that go to general fund last year nor this year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Um, so a- about the three point eight, this this includes. It includes their maintained services number. And while everyone else is dealing with the so-called Essers Cliff, which means basically the. COVID relief fund money is ending. Um, for instance, there are counties around us that are having to eliminate positions. Um, the school board basically explained to us which positions were funded with Essers money. And we made sure we included them here so that no positions had to be eliminated because we couldn't fund them. Um, so we have funded all positions that were created with Essers funds, which our school board did a great job of not including too many things there. That we couldn't pick it up going forward, so we've included everybody that had a job. Could still potentially, how the school board moves that around. As far as which positions they decide to keep or get rid of, that's up to them, but. This allows them to to do that based on the math they provided to us.
Their their positions were positions like nurses and counselors and.
Correct, they're they're.
And social workers, it wasn't.
They're support positions, it's not teachers, teachers are federally and state funded for the most part, except for the supplements that the counties provide. Um, so it's it's all of the administrative, the assistant principals, the um nurses, there, I think there were. Don't quote me, but I think it was like four out of five nurses or maybe five out of five nurses, four out of five counselors. And three assistant principals, I'm not a hundred percent sure off the top of my head, but the the number that they requested. They told us how many of them are already funded with Essers money and we included the ones that are already funded so that none of those go away.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
What what's Essers money?
I'm not really sure what it stands for, to be totally honest with you, um, it, but it's like ARPA money, we got ARPA money, um, American Rescue Plan Act. There's a school version of ARPA money, um. I can look it up and I'll get back to you on what it stands for, but it's basically one-time money.
Okay.
To to supplement some of the hardships of COVID throughout the last couple of years for schools.
So am I, am I right to say that we added positions during COVID when most of the children were home?
Not, not, well, I can speak some to that.
Yeah.
They weren't added when kids went at home, no, it was when they came back, when the nurse, when they needed extra nurses, when they did away with um. Quarantining and and all that stuff was going on, they added a nurse in each school, each school didn't have a nurse at the time. So they added nurses to these, to continue adding to all the schools.
And if I.
And then the whole social mental issue that hap- that happened with COVID.
Sorry.
And isolated for so long, there was a need for counselor, more counselors and more, and a lot more need for more social workers. And that's where those jobs came in at.
And some of them are teaching coaches too, so some of them are in classroom activities, but they aren't. The teacher specifically because that position would be funded by federal or state money.
But with the added positions, the county is going to absorb those from that one time because COVID's gone, thank God.
That's right, yes.
So the county's going to absorb them, so they did add, that's, we added more.
Yes, yes, there there are more physicians now than there were, yes.
It was after the county, it wasn't while they were sitting home, it was.
And just in FYI, for the life of me, I don't understand why we can't make a more robust. Health department with traveling nurses that would supplement the school position, um, just for what that's worth.
Like I said, I'm proud of the fact that we are protecting our uh emergency fund balance for the county. Because I've been through that two years ago, that a hurricane, hurricane season coming up, so we are protecting our fund balance, that's still important for the county.
Yes. Okay, let's see. Um, as far as the utilities funds go, um, they are. Separate from the general fund, so uh there are some pretty significant water rate changes. In order to prepare for the upcoming water project, um, there have been no water rate changes since twenty fifteen. Um, so this will allow for one unified fee schedule. It allows for an equitable fee across the county where some de- some districts were paying more than others because. Of the load on on the um individuals. Now that all of the systems are integrated, um, it it lends itself to a more unified fee schedule. Again, just caveat, this excludes Maple Hill because it's a isolated system. Um, and the fee schedule will now be based on meter size rather than district. And that is all that I have, um, we ask that you approve the budget, if you have any questions, like I said, I'm happy to answer them.
I have just a couple more.
Sure.
Indulge me, I've had like seven days to absorb a hundred and six million dollars.
Yeah, it's it's a lot.
It's, makes me scratch my head a little bit, sorry, um. So splitting, splitting the fire marshals and the emergency management office, what benefit does that give the taxpayers? By creating a new director, right?
So it doesn't create a new position, so financially that doesn't impact taxpayers at all.
It doesn't affect salary for.
That's correct. None of the salaries changed based on that specific change, all it did was it took their funds and split them into two different orgs. Two different departments, so the the fire marshal's office knows what their costs are and emergency management knows what theirs are specifically. Um, so if it actually makes it easier for in the future if some organizational change needs to be made. Um, it's really just who reports to who versus the finances. But there are no, we literally took the budget and split them, these, this is an emergency management cost. This is a fire marshal's office cost, so it costs nothing.
Okay.
It's more about chain of command.
I got you, oh, I understand that. Um, and the tax, adding tax assessors positions. And forgive me, I I know the the tax lady, Ms. Randy, I would never reach out with her at this terrible moment in her life.
You're welcome to reach out to me and I'll be glad to answer your question.
Ask her anything right now, um, but creating those positions full-time. And I understand we have a company that I think is doing a very good job, I understand from people that are coming in and doing the contract work.
Yes.
Therefore, we don't have to hire people with salaries and benefits and stuff like that, because I know what kind of recurring cost that is.
That's right.
So what's the benefit with adding three full-time spots versus those contract workers that are doing a great job?
Sure, that, you're correct, um, we could do it either way is the answer. Um, in in this budget, it was indicated that the. I would say the span of control, I guess, um. Was in favor of them being permanent employees so that. We can utilize them in other ways, not just for the rebound. Um, because we have needs in a lot of other of those areas to, in order to keep up with the pays. So for instance, and I'd have to do a little bit of research to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn.
That was left with the.
That's right, um.
Day-to-day activities.
That's right, we have a lot of, a- and we have this in my department too, but um, there are one person responsible for one thing. And if there are too many for that one person to handle, that one person's the only person that knows how to do that. Because everybody else is overwhelmed with all their other things. So in order to keep up with what this evaluation company is putting through to them. They have to have more people or it's gonna stay years behind um where they were. And they've done a lot of good work to catch up, that's right.
Is the contract company in the office helping them too in the office?
They they are, but just temporarily, um, they they helped them catch up, but that doesn't help them stay caught up.
I just, I'm just seeing addition, I'm I'm very pro limited government.
Sure.
I don't want to pro government unless we have to for the benefit of citizens, that's what I want to lay out there.
But yeah.
We had a big, uh.
Yeah, but but yeah.
The end of the year, there was a major disaster at the tax office, and there was pretty significant uh issues over there that. If we'd had the manpower, people would have been paying their bills twice and us having to refund them and. We had to vote to refund it and they were, they were, they were really short-staffed and uh. Yeah, there was several dozen emails and calls that came.
Yeah, and and during their busy time.
That came from contracting things out that got kind of messed up with the contractor.
Yeah, the contractor has done a really great job and I've talked to Melissa about that and. Um, she she's well aware of the fact that we could either contract this out or have the the employees, it was suggested.
What was her name?
Um, she she seems good with it either way, to be totally honest with you, um, she likes the contractors. And I don't want to speak for her by any means, but but when she presented it, um, she understood that that, you know, there's pros and cons to both sides. Um, so I, she and she knows that the contractors do a good job. Um, and sometimes it is harder to find county employees to to stay around sometimes, so.
I don't know who would train the lawyers, because I don't think they could even train.
It would.
Yeah, it's a good challenge, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let me say for the record, I have ultimate confidence in our tax director. Uh, Ms. Radke, a fine job, but she came into that position and it was a difficult position. Due to the backlog, the inefficiencies of the office and how it had been ran for years. And we didn't, and we had to retain contract employees to get her back up to a level playing field. And and felt that the additional personnel was needed to keep us from sliding back into a situation. Where our current employees had more work than they could possibly get done. And put us back into a situation where we would have to at some point in the future, hire contract workers to get us. Back, because we didn't want to put her in that position either.
And and to be, to be very fair, um, the contractor would actually cost more in the long run. Because you're gonna have to pay them. A markup on their employees in the first place.
Not to mention the lack of institutional knowledge and the and the ability to have. Employees cover for one another for vacation, sick time, that kind of thing, because right now. As I understood it before we approved these new personnel, there was one person, one job, and when that person was out. That job didn't get done and that's one of the problems that they would have.
Well, they're doing a good job, came out healthy today, very polite and doing a good job.
You talking about the contractors?
Yeah.
Good.
The taxes.
I'm sure they'll be glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Do you have any other question?
Yeah.
Okay, if you come up with anymore in the future, I'm happy to answer.
She answered some uh crazy questions.
No crazy questions, I appreciate them very much, I I appreciate that you care.
Veritable found of information and knowledge.
Yes, she is, she explains it really well.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Really, I think you did a really good job, you guys done this year, you know, a difficult job. And nobody gets everything they want, but I'm definitely looking for the outcomes here, what's been going forward and. And like I say, I'm really proud that we're maintaining our emergency fund balance with depth and depth, hurricane season. And so I think overall, this is really.
Thank you very much.
So any questions, comments, Mr. Groves, you have anything? Is there a motion to approve?
Um, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the balance of the. Um, uh, year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget as presented by Ms. Blue. Less the sheriff's office temporary slash part-time wages. Unless the Parks and Recreation Department temporary part-time wages.
So a motion to, and just for clarity for everybody that doesn't know, I work part-time very rarely nowadays with um Parks and Rec. So that's being pulled, so I don't vote for that part of the budget. And Mr. Groves is a part-time or was a part-time employee with the sheriff department, so that's being pulled out, so he doesn't vote for. For that part of the budget.
We'll have separate votes for those two items afterwards.
Is there a motion to approve the, that amendment to the?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
I made a motion.
I'm sorry.
But this is voting for everything except for those.
All right, now, uh, now I'd like to make a motion to approve the um financial year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. For the sheriff's office temporary part-time wages.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll make a second.
Oh, is the favor raised right hand?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. For Parks and Rec Department temporary part-time wages.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, is the favor raised right hand? Thank you very much.
Well done, staff, thank you for all the hard work during budget season, we appreciate. Um, all the concessions and the ability to work through that difficult season. Once again, thank you so much, Ms. Blue, for all you do.
Nine point four, Mr. Cologne. Sodium hydroxide for a water treatment plant.
Greetings, Commissioner, my name is Anthony Cologne and I'm the executive director of Public Utilities. And now that we have a budget, um, I would like to request the approval. For a purchase order to Brent Lake Miss out for the purchase of sodium hydroxide. Sodium hydroxide is the chemical that we use during water treatment to adjust the pH in the water. Uh, this comes at a yearly cost of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I have a motion to approve nine point four for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for sodium hydroxide. I have a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, is the favor raised right hand? Nine point five.
So, um, same as uh I do nine point four, but I'm requesting the approval of the purchase of uh. An approval of a purchase order to American Inc. uh for ferric sulfate. Uh, ferric sulfate is the primary quagland that we use to remove uh particles and colors out of the water. Prior to filtration of the water treatment plant, uh, this come at a yearly cost of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second? Oh, is the favor raised right hand?
And lastly would be the uh, I requesting the approval of a purchase order to American Inc. for aluminum sulfate. Uh, this is for our wastewater treatment plant, uh, the four twenty-one corridor. Uh, this is chemical that we use to, as a quagland, uh, for our clarifiers, this is to get our organics. To settle in the clarifier so that we can then filter the water and provide back to this uh, to the environment as it comes in. Um, this is at a cost of fifty-five thousand dollars per year.
Motion for approval. I would like to, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, is the favor raised right hand? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I have one thing for you before you leave.
Yes, sir.
So you had an employee, I think, uh, that saved the Commerce Park, maybe a few million dollars over the weekend.
Yes, sir.
For you to thank that employee for, see, I guess I observed it, noticed the fire and the the smoke coming off the top of the Coastal Beverage Building.
What happened, who was it?
I don't know who was.
So employee at my water, I'm I'm a water treatment plant doing its rounds, uh, this past Saturday. He didn't notice the smoke was coming out of the Coastal Beverage Building. And he decided to call nine-one-one, actually he did a great duty, called nine-one-one and be able to. Uh, get EMS in place at 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 the right time before huge damage.
Make sure he gets recognition before our editor leaves today.
We will be working on that, yes.
Well, that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have moved nine, eleven point one to the end of the meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Mr. Cologne, you shared with me before we started the meeting that there's been some progress on the four twenty-one water project. Can you share for all of us what that, what's going up to happen tomorrow?
Absolutely, so uh tomorrow at three PM, I will have the first kickoff meeting with uh. CDM Smith is the engineer firm that we have selected to uh help us found in funding and designing. Uh, for future water lines on the four twenty-one corridor towards to Harrows and connecting to Highway eleven. Uh, in this meeting, we will be meeting in person and we will, we will be discussing uh. Applications that we need to be filling out for uh especially CDBG funding and uh SRF funding.
Excellent, let us know how that goes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So there's no items listed for any of the sewer districts, or the Health Department, or? No, that's right. I forgot, nine point seven. Nine point seven, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five workers comp. Sorry about that.
Sorry, me again. Um, this is just our annual renewal for NCACC, um, risk pool liability and property insurance and workers' comp. Um, I'm, I'm presenting both of them, 'cause Pam is, um, out on vacation and it's according to our budget, so these are budgeted items every year. Um, and they are, um, it's our renewal for July one, so we wanted to get it on as quickly as we could, so that we can have that in place.
So I'm assuming this is our contribution, it says employer contribution?
Yes.
So in the packet that was laid on up here, there is?
Um, the property liability is a million thirty-seven thousand and some change, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, and workers' comp is three hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Is there a motion to approve to pay those workers' comp and liability?
I have a question. Did we shop that this year, or is that?
We did not. Um, we've debated that every year since COVID started, um, because it's never really been a good time and i- it's still from the insurance company or the insurance industry's feedback, still not a great time to do that. I don't know that there really ever will be a great time to do it, um, but to answer your question, no, we did not. We did consider it, but we did not shop it.
Something that we might wanna consider for next year?
Sure.
In light of that, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, NCACC workers' comp and LMP insurance renew, renewal for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, is the favor raised your right hand?
Thank you very much.
So now, there is nothing on the agenda for the water and sewer districts, is that correct, Mr. Cologne? County Board of Health?
Nope.
Social Services Board?
Yes, sir.
Items from the county manager?
Yes, sir, I don't have any.
Our attorney hasn't made it yet, so we'll start with Ms. Vice Chair Newton.
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. McCoy? I'd like to say, uh, the Blueberry Festival this weekend, I think it's really important for Pender County. The, uh, it's good PR, people from over fifty miles come up here, Murda Beach and everywhere I've been talking to. It was kind of hot Saturday, but it's a good event and a lot of people were there and I always enjoy talking to a lot of different people. And tell them about the good quality of Pender County, so it was a good day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Groves?
Uh, I just wanna thank everyone for the cards and the emails and everything that they did after my wreck. Full transparency, I did get hit head on. Um, I think two of them jumped and ran, the other one had the driver's license and insurance. So they're out there, just be aware. I am recovering, I have about twelve more weeks to recover, and I just thank everyone.
Mr. Groves, Mr. Burton?
Um, just again, I wanna thank, um, the GOP Executive Committee for having the faith and confidence in me to, uh, to, to allow me to take this seat. Um, and I'm gonna work hard each and every day for the citizens of, of Pender County, from the ocean to Bladen County line. Um, even though I'm District Two, um, I think it's important to listen to each and every citizen in this county. I do like that the budget did not raise taxes, um, on the citizens, so therefore, I, I absorbed it a little better. Um, it was a pretty significant hike last year, and passed the school bond, do that. I just appreciate everybody's support, uh, especially my family, um, my mother, my wife. She's gonna be just as much in the role as this, as everybody here is, there are significant others. I appreciate her standing by my side for the last twenty-five years and, and allowed me to do that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and welcome to the board. Glad to have you. Um, I appreciate the board, uh, excuse me, at the last meeting, I was on a family vacation that was very warm in Florida. If you think it's warm here, go to Florida. Um, so I have, do have just a couple of things from the WMPO, um, concerning the, uh, projects that's been approved in the, in the county, affect Highway seventeen through Hampstead. The median project, which was put on hold during the bypass construction and was unfunded, has now been funded. It will start, um, immediately after the second phase of the, of the bypass is complete. They're not gonna try to do both, thankfully, at the same time. They're gonna wait till the bypass opens and then we'll get the pleasure of experience, what Ogden's experienced for the last four years with constant road construction. And I don't think that project's ever gonna end. And along with that project was a project they hope to start soon, where it's, they are, uh, upgrading the signal system so they can be synchronized through Hampstead. Um, if you go through Hampstead now, there's between Scotts Hill and Slukey Point, it seems like there's fifty stoplights now and none of them work at the same time. You just stop on one and go to the next one, stop again. Um, that modification and upgrade, hopefully they're gonna start within the next few months. So maybe we'll see some relief on that quarter of Hampstead. I thought that was great news for our county, that we're finally getting recognized. It's thirty years too late, but at least we are starting to get some money flowing, flowing, flowing our county for highway infrastructure. And other than that, I have nothing else. Do we have a motion to go in closed session?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development personnel and attorney-client matters.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, is the favor raised your right hand? And we'll be back out here at seven for the public hearing.
I'd like to call a public hearing for the special use permit zoning map amendments and resolutions to order 21.1.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moran worked really hard on this case. I want to give credit where credit is due. Unfortunately, he was not able to be at the meeting this evening, but I just wanted to acknowledge that our long-range planner, Adam Moran, did a lot of hard work on this case. So the first case on the agenda, the first case on the agenda this evening is a text amendment, and we're excited to bring this before the commissioners. This is something that we've been talking about with the board for a little while now. It relates to what we're calling personal, personal structures in parentheses, non-commercial. In more layman's terms, you might refer to it as a shed or a storage building, and how they can be permitted on properties that don't have a primary structure or a home. So if I may use a sort of a rough rendering here as an example of what the current regulations are, let's, let's say a homeowner, perhaps Ms. Hollinger, we use that name, owns property. Both of these parcels outlined in red. Her home is on the larger parcel, and she wants to place a storage building or a shed on the smaller parcel so that she can store her lawnmower, chainsaw, or rake. Well, she wouldn't be allowed to do that under current regulations. She would have to place that shed on her property. And so this text amendment is aimed at correcting that issue.
Or a more recent example would be a piece of land that had been subdivided with the home on one side, and they still have the same owner, they just have different parcels now, and you couldn't put a shed on the other side of the yard.
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am. So again, the, the intention of this text amendment is aimed at allowing structures for personal storage or non-commercial use on vacant residential properties. This is specific to the RA, Rural Agricultural, and RP, Residential Performance Zoning Districts. And the use is intended, or is not intended to be used as a dwelling or a commercial structure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why are we saying on vacant residential properties?
Well, if there was a, a primary structure or a house on the property, this would-
No, that's not my point. If you have land, you own land, you own a parcel of land, and you want to put a accessory building to store your tractor in, to store your tools there, where you've got your garden, maybe. That wouldn't necessarily be a residential property. Are we assuming that at some point there would be a residence built on the parcel where the accessory building would be stored? Because that's not necessarily the intent for some citizens. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. That's a good question. And the, the residential classification is more specific to the zoning districts and how the UDO defines a different zoning district. So residential property, even if it's vacant or not currently being used, if it's zoned RA or RP, then it's a residential property.
You're using that as a figure of speech.
To a degree, to a degree, yes, sir. Does that answer your question, or is your question more so, if I have a vacant piece of property that's zoned commercial, why can't I put a-
I, I just don't understand. If you want to tie it to a, a type of, of RP or rural development, say that, but you're saying here, I'm a wordsmith, you're specifying vacant residential properties. Not every parcel of land that a citizen who owns, is going to want to put a resident. I don't know why we're calling it a vacant residential property.
I think it's just because of the, if rural agriculture could put residents there, you could put residents on-
Yeah, but say RA, say RP, say general business, but why are we calling it a residential property if there's no residence on it? And that's the problem.
Right. And the code is much more specific. I, on this bullet point, used shorthand and called it a residential property. Yes, ma'am. So I'll hit an overview of the changes, and I'll dig into each one a little bit, in a little bit more detail. So in Article 5.2.3, we establish a new use on the table of permitted uses. And then in 5.3.12, we define that use and establish some standards. And those standards include how the building is defined, that it may not be used as a dwelling or a business, that it must meet setbacks for primary structures, and that the number of structures is based on the size of the parcel. So I'll dig into each of these a little bit further. So again, the first change is to Article 5.3.2, the table of permitted uses, so we'll add a row which will show personal structures are permitted with use standards in the RA and RP zoning districts. And then in Section 5.3.12R of the UDO, there will be a definition and a few more standards that will read as follows. A principal structure solely dedicated to personal non-commercial use, such as a personal non-commercial garage, personal storage building not associated with a commercial use, or workshop structure not associated with a commercial use. The structure may be used for the storage of personal items, or is a non-commercial workshop only, and may not be used as a dwelling, and is subject to the following additional requirements. I'll leave this on the screen for a moment. One, the structure must meet all setback and dimensional requirements for principal structures in the zoning district in which it is permitted. Two, the applicant must acknowledge that the personal structure will be placed on the parcel in such a manner that at such time the structure becomes an accessory to a primary structure, is compliant with all of the requirements for accessory structures consistent with Section 5.3.3 of the UDO. So let me, let me break that out a little bit. Let's go back to that example with Ms. Hollinger and her vacant piece of property. She puts a shed on that property. Well, at some future point, she may want to put a home on that property. And the code requires that there be separation between those two structures. So this specific item is really more designed to be informational and to remind folks that, hey, if they have an intent or desire to put a house on that property in the future, they may want to consider where they place this personal structure. And then third, the number of personal structures allowed on each parcel is dependent upon the size of the parcel. And I will note that we're not regulating the size of these personal structures, nor the design type. Some folks may refer to them as storage buildings, workshops, sheds. Those will all basically be classified as a personal structure in parentheses, non-commercial by the UDO. There are two policies in the comprehensive plan that support this text amendment, Policy 5.1G and Policy 5.1EE. I'll leave those on the screen for the board to review for a moment. Staff is recommending approval of this text amendment. It's consistent with the spirit and intent of the UDO. It's also supported by two policies in the comprehensive plan. It also accommodates non-residential uses that are reasonably expected in rural, low, or medium-density resi-, excuse me, medium-density land use patterns. And then lastly, it creates a clear procedure for lawfully using personal property for this personal, personal non-commercial use. At the May 7th Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board voted five to one to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment. And what's shown on the screen here is a plan consistency statement. We asked the board to use this language when making a motion if they so choose. I believe there are a few sign-ups related to this case, so I'll be happy to answer any questions either before the sign-ups or after the sign-ups at the board's discretion.
Is there any questions for staff before the sign-ups speak?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There are three individuals that have signed up to speak on this item. The first individual is Greg Lawrence from 474 Andrews Road, Amstead, North Carolina. Mr. Lawrence?
He was here earlier. He, he left.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. The next individual is Larry T. Bowlic, 2525 Pendley Highway, Ergoff.
So while he's coming to the mic, I'll just do the, the speech here. Speakers, we acknowledge by the board chairperson in order of which their names appear on the sheet. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speakers should be courteous and respectful in their remarks and refrain from personal attacks, use of profanity, and discussion of personnel and other matters deemed confidential by law. You have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Larry T. Bowlic, 2525 Pendley Highway. As y'all know, I've come here a couple times in the past asking y'all to present this to the planning board. The planning board has come up with a plan that it seems that everybody that I've talked with has asked me about it. They're in agreement with it. I appreciate his staff, what they've done at the time. I appreciate y'all listening to the countless people that has come in here over the last year or so and asked for some help. I'm just asking y'all approve this tonight, and I thank you for your time and thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Mr. Bowlic, Mr. Bowlic saw fit to show up at my house in the middle of the morning and tell me that he had a problem and he needed this done, and we have been working on it ever since. So thank you for getting the ball rolling, Mr. Bowlic.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Government sure does move slow, but it moves.
Well, it moves. That's all we can.
The next individual is Olive Hollingen, 2530 Pontywoods Road, Ergoff.
Olive Hollinger, 2530 Pontywoods Road, Ergoff. I'd like to thank this board for responding to the concerns previously presented regarding placing structures on one's property. I'd also like to thank the planning department for their work on restructuring this ordinance, and the planning board for the support of the change. I feel the proposed amendment has addressed the concerns presented and encourage you now to approve these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you recognize that example I was using?
Oh, yeah.
That was you.
Is there any other comments or questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
Um, there's not a question. Is there appropriate?
Yes, sir.
So I, this, this is a, I think this is a great text amendment that 25 years passed due. It's a great thing. In a former life, I've done some building and development here in Pender County. This is, I am showing a lot of folks. I'm a big proponent of land rights for people. And if folks have land, or they want to improve it, put a structure, a building on it for their tractor, whatever, the government should never stand in their way for that. And I'm wholeheartedly supporting this, and it's way overdue.
So are you ready for a motion?
I just have one question, and I know the answer to it, I think. So I was asked about this and residential developments that are, have a homeowners association. Those restrictions on those homeowners associations still supersede this, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So HOAs can have rules in excess of county requirements, but they, they can't fall below county threshold of county requirements. Thank you.
Well, like I said, just along with you, I agree. So if you own property, you should be able to use what you want to do. The government cannot be stepping in and just telling you, what's being done here. Some town regulations are mortifying this one. Definitely, I'm supporting this.
Does that mean we can get rid of restrictions on county's boxes next?
Another question.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this zoning text amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance's purpose and intent and advances the public health- purpose and intent and advances the public health, safety, or welfare, and is consistent with two policies in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Policy 5.1.G Development Review, and Policy 5.1.EE Rural Land Use Patterns.
Motion. Motion to second all those in favor, raise your hand.
It's unanimous. So, Mr. Planning Director, I just want to point out one thing. This solves a great deal of problems for a great deal of people, and it makes a lot of sense. But we're still dealing with the situation where people have land that they own, maybe on a river, maybe on a creek, maybe on a parcel away from their home with a travel trailer, that they can't use their trailer to enjoy their property on the river, and I'd like to see that taken care of with an amendment somewhat like this. This was very deftly done. You didn't overreach. I think it's very eloquent and, and well done, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
21.2 Cherry. Cherry requests rezoning approximately 4.91 acres from GB, General Business Zoning District to conditional zoning in Rocky Point Township.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight I'll be presenting, excuse me, today I'll be presenting rezon 2024-62. Seth Stroud, applicant on behalf of Stroud Holding LLC. The owner is requesting the approval of a conditional zoning map amendment to rezone a parcel totaling approximately 4.91 acres of land from the General Business Zoning District to a conditional zoning district. The proposal, ah, the proposal request would prevent a 2,600 square foot addition to the existing boat manufacturing business, which currently operates on property of Stroud Craft Marine. The request would also include a 93-unit covered storage facility for boats and recreational vehicles. Here we have the vicinity map. We can see it's located just north of Carr Avenue. To the west, we have Heidi Trask Senior High School. To the northeast is the intersection of 210 and 117, and just to the south is Carr Avenue. It's hatched right here. Here's an aerial image. We can see where the boat, this building's where the boat manufacturing takes place. And here we have the existing conditions. Surrounding the subject property is residential homes. Right now on the site, there's just boat manufacturing. And here is what it looks like as of today. We can see there's over, over line power, power lines over the property, boat manufacturing, and no real landscaping buffers along the perimeter. Here's our zoning map, which shows that this is general business, surrounded by Residential Performance, RP, and to the north, Rural Agricultural, O&amp;I, which locates, is the location of a church, and then general business to the northeast as well. This is the applicant's proposed site plan. We can see these two buildings will be the storage units. They'll have a utility building. And zoomed in here to the left is their existing boat manufacturing facility, and then it will be expanded by 2,600 square feet. I'll pause now. Does the board have any questions? Is this the Opener Academy site? Yes, yes, sir, I believe so. And the storage facilities here are actually permitted by right in the GB, General Business Zoning District. The applicant is proposing a conditional zoning, or to rezone it to conditional zoning for the expansion of their boat manufacturing facility. This is a historic use on the site. It's been there over 30 years. I believe the applicant here can clarify that, but it's, the historic use is boat manufacturing. Here is an example of the covered storage facilities that we putting on the property if approved. And here we have traffic counts, which show that the road between 117 saw us on 210. This is under capacity and can support any additional traffic that the proposed use The applicant is not proposing any residential uses for the property. They are proposing NACs Code 531130, lessors of many warehouses and self-storage units, as well as NACs Code 336612 boat building. NACs Code 531130 is permitted by right, and NACs Code 336612 is not permitted in this district except for the approval of the conditional zoning. Here are the setbacks for the property. It's a double frontage lot, so there's no rear setback, so they'll follow a 25-foot setback on Carr Avenue and NC 210, and the rest will follow the general business setbacks. Here's the landscaping plan. As we saw earlier on the existing conditions, there's a 10-foot power line easement that runs north parallel to NC 210, which would prevent the planting of trees here. So we've worked, staff, Justin, I've worked with Duke Energy and with the applicant to pose a modified C2 buffer, which would meet the C2 requirements minus the canopy trees as not interfere with power line easement. Around the other borders, we have on the eastern boundary a C1 buffer, and C2 buffers around the southern and western boundaries. And this is more detail on those buffer types. The C1 buffer requires a six-foot high fence, two canopy trees, and a 10-foot wide strip. The C2 buffer requires 15-foot wide strip, a six-foot high fence, or a hedge, one canopy tree, and four understory trees. And the modified buffer will match that without the requirement for trees. And this is all per 100 linear feet, and all have at least 98% grass coverage. Here is the Future Land Use Plan. This is neighborhood mixed use. When the desired outcomes for this classification are commercial, retail, as well as single-family residential. And appropriate uses are low-density residential structures, industrial uses, and storage. And though this is inconsistent with that, this allows the historic use to come into compliance and expand, as well as provide boat storage for surrounding areas. And staff is recommending approval of this. Rezoning this parcel to a conditional zoning district would be consistent with the historic use of the property while allowing the business to expand. The proposal is supported by three policies in the Future Land Use Plan, Policy 5.1.C, 5.1.F, 5.1.K, and the proposed zoning map amendment is supported by these policies that encourage appropriately located commercial development that minimize impact on existing residential uses. At the May 7th Planning Board meeting, they unanimously approved or recommended approval for this with the condition that projects shall comply with all requirements of the Pender County UDO. The project shall meet all other local, state, and federal regulations, and the stacking of boats shall be prohibited. Are there any questions from the board?
Any questions, wardens?
I noticed there was only a couple of people at the public meeting, and one of them asked about the lighting. So there's won't be a lot of shadow, lighting, or net, no?
I believe the applicant's here, he can speak to that. Yes, sir.
So have we, was there any discussion about hours of operation?
I believe at the planning board, the, they made a distinction between the boat manufacturing and then the storage, but I believe that the applicant would know more about that.
But there's no time limits on being, I guess they, the owners come and go as they please?
I believe it's going to be 24 hours, but that would be to the applicant to, that's now.
No.
No.
No. You got to come up and speak in that microphone.
Is there any other questions for staff?
No.
All right. Were there any signups?
I just want to hear about the lighting.
Okay, we got signups.
Yes, sir, we have two individuals signed up. The first individual is Leah. I don't have the last sign up, I can't read it.
Leah?
Leah.
Okay, yeah, it looks like Leah, but sure. If it's your name, go for it. Okay.
Is, is there anyone else there?
Yes, we have Marilyn Black signed up.
Would you like Ms. Black to sign, speak first? Is your applicant correct?
Yes, sir.
In case she has something you can answer when you come up?
Sure. Ms. Black?
Blair.
Oh, Blair, okay, my apologies.
Marilyn Blair, I live at 277 Carr Avenue, Rocky Point, North Carolina. I'm actually right, they, they are what we see when we go out our front door, so we love them. It's been a boat place for as long as we can remember. We've been there 24 years, and we really want them to stay. We don't find there to be, the noise is no problem, we don't hear. They are very respectful, and their coming and going has never bothered us, and we are literally right across the street. And you know, the building is back further so, towards the Carr Avenue, so. And that's really about it. We just really want them to stay.
I feel like I'm in a Gary Larson. Everybody's so nice today, and everybody's supportive. This is unusual.
Move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can come up. That's the applicant.
How much did you pay her to say that?
I was literally thinking that, everybody thought probably things I paid her to say that. My name is Seth Stroud, 1399 Highway 210, Rocky Point. And I'm the applicant to, I guess to answer your question, Mr. Rose, on the lighting, we're going to rely on Duke Energy to help us with that. They will, I believe, try to keep the lights low, and, and where they just eliminate the parking lot and don't affect the neighbors. The, the place is modeled after Riceville Beach Storage, which is in Wilmington. And they also, I believe, have some houses around, and that's, you know, as far as, that's all I know on that, we will rely on Duke Energy to help us with that. And then if, once we get, if we get approval as we continue the, the planning and engineering design.
So they're 24-hour on, boat owner access?
Yes, we plan to leave at 24 hours, unless there was an issue with that, but as, we actually spoke about this a lot in the planning board meeting, we came up, and that kind of came up to the conclusion that, you know, most people with, with boats don't really, you know, they're going to be hanging out there real late at night. You know, coming to get your boat early in the morning to go fishing might be a thing, but this is definitely more set up for long-term storage, I think, and, you know, people, they will be getting their boat on the weekend, more than likely. But it is a little bit farther out of town and away from, you know, where they would be using the boats, and more likely they'd be coming into town, picking their boat up, and then, you know, taking it to where they need to go, and, and things like that, I believe. And storing them for the winter, you know, using it at a season.
Do you have a wash down of that there as a part of the?
We don't right now, but we plan on having some sort of, you know, some, some small station or something to be able to, you know, do some rents off or whatever, but no, no water per, you know, every, every bay or.
Right. Any other questions?
Mr. Stroud, you, are you just wearing a shirt, or are you building privateers?
I actually build privateers. I bought privateer about nine, nine months ago and brought them here.
Historic boat.
Yes, sir, thank you. Trying to keep that legacy going and expand that, so.
Cool deal. Any other questions, comments?
Here now, is there a motion? I want to make a motion to approve and.
Page 12, yeah.
Oh, we got another.
You didn't have anything else?
No.
Yeah, he's done.
You can thank me for you being here because I made that phone call to, um, Mr., I can't think his name right now.
Adams.
Because there was nothing in place, you know, and of course, I got to complain also, and I want to thank you for the cleanup and all of the work that y'all have done. You've done a lot of work, and, and I'm really appreciative of that. So I want to make a motion to approve, motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Policy 5.1.C is in Charlie, Policy 5.1.F is in Frank, Policy 5.1.K is in King. While the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the neighborhood mixed use for, for future, I can't talk, use plan classification in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the proposal is reasonable and in the public interest because it has the potential to be general consistent with current land uses in the vicinity.
Have a motion to second all those in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you.
Make yourself out the end.
And now we, we are down to you, 21 foot three, Mr. Adams.
Yes, sir. This is the final case on the agenda, and it is also a staff-initiated text amendment. This one's a little bit simpler than the first one that I proposed. It's more specific to Article 7.9, which regulates stormwater management in the county. And it's simple in that it's only removing one word. It's removing the word "not" from the following sentence. Calculations and specifications are not required to be submitted. And that language exists from a time when we did not have the technical expertise on staff to review stormwater plans, calculations, and specifications. The board may recall that earlier this year, we entered into a contract with Sungate Design Group to service a third-party stormwater review. They're an engineering firm out of the Raleigh area. So they work with us on development reviews specific to stormwater regulations. There's actually no change to the regulation itself, so we're not requiring that developments detain more water or build bigger ponds, we're just simply requiring that they show their work on how they came to the conclusion that their pond meets the standards of our ordinance. So specifically in Article 7.9, it will read, "All details of the stormwater collection, retention, and discharge systems shall be included on the plans, including pipe sizes, locations of all structures and devices, all proposed inverts and grades, and any other typical details required to construct the system. Calculations and specifications are required to be submitted." This text amendment is also consistent with two policies in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Policy 3.1.D and Policy 5.1.G. Staff is recommending approval. It's consistent with spirit and intent of the UDO and two policies in the comprehensive plan, and it provides the county with the tools to enforce its regulations. So we now have this resource, we have this technical expertise that we're able to tap into, so our regulations need to catch up with that resource that we have. The Planning Board, at their May 7th meeting unanimously recommended approval of this text amendment, and I don't believe there were any signups associated with this case.
Any signups? There are no signups, is there? So how's this working out? Is it, is it, are we seeing the difference? Are we getting better plans, or?
Well, I don't know that the plans are better, but it's, we're able to facilitate conversation and be sure that what is being submitted and what's being constructed meets the standards of our ordinance. I'll speak on behalf of all the staff. We felt pretty hamstrung when folks called in and asked, what's the deal with this new development? I don't think their stormwater system is, is functioning correctly. We just don't have that technical expertise to say, to review plans, stormwater plans, and say, yes, it is functioning, or no, it's not. And so having that resource available has been a tremendous asset to us.
Have they reviewed any, have they set back for modifications? Have they, have they found any findings, or?
To, to a degree, yes, sir, but we're a little bit tied, our hands are a little bit tied because of this.
This word.
Right. So they're having to rely on the good faith of. So they're having to rely on the good faith of the engineers rather than them having to produce the calculations as to how they came to their conclusions.
I don't know if it works, because it seems like several have not worked in the way that they've said they want to work.
It'd be great for everybody involved.
Yes, sir.
So have a motion? Oh, sorry.
One question, so am I correct in thinking that danger and stormwater, ultimately, that's the state's responsibility, right? And they do not mandate the county to have someone on that staff?
So the state does not mandate that the county have stormwater regulations. The state does issue stormwater permits. They're more concerned about the quality of runoff, whereas the county's regulations are more concerned with the quantity or the volume of the water that's conveyed from the site.
Got you.
Yes, sir. Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions? I'm sorry. We have, any motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, I'm assuming with this.
The zoning tax amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of Pender County UDO and the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning tax amendment is supported by the following policies within the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Policy 3.1.D, stormwater runoff, Policy 5.1.G, development review. Sorry.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes the annual public hearing, part of our meeting for planning.
We do have one item that we have to address, leftover that we moved from our regulations end to this spot, which is going to be 22.1.
Y'all can stay or go.
Yeah, y'all have to stay for this, if you don't want to.
But thank you all for coming.
We'd love to have you for a second.
Thank you, congratulations. Good luck with your business.
This is appointing.
Trey, are you available? Trey?
Yes. I was on mute, sorry. I didn't want to be making noise here.
Hacking and sniffling and such.
So this is the appointment of the clerk. This is, Mr. Andrews is retiring at the end of June. He is currently our clerk, and we have to, we have to appoint someone to take that position.
So the reason that I asked that it be continued until Trey got here, there was a situation of late where we had a clerk, and we decided to, we at one time had the manager acting as clerk, and for continuity's sake and for control's sake, we reverted back to having the county manager act as clerk, and his assistant serve as clerical personnel assistant to the board. But technically, the manager is the clerk to the board for the purpose of the statute. Trey, can you address that with them and explain the reasoning for that?
Um, yes, ma'am. The, there are a couple of points on that. One is that there is, there can be a contention that if you appoint someone other than the manager as clerk, and in Pender, at least, other places may have, you know, multiple clerks, but that the manager then can't, is without authority to discipline the assistant that he has helping him by performing the clerical duties. And so that raises an issue, and also it gives, as you said, better continuity for the manager to serve, because again, the, you know, the clerical duties can be performed by an assistant. And so the assistant to the manager, excuse me, is then designated as an assistant or deputy clerk. So that person then can still do duties and can still, you know, certify documents. Just as you're familiar with, you know, the clerk of court doesn't sign an awful lot of documents that come through the clerk's office. They're signed by an assistant or deputy clerk, and the same thing can happen with that. But the county manager is the clerk, and, you know, so that gives some, as you said, continuity on that. And also, there's no question about the chain of command, because the Board of Commissioners, at least in the past, has not wanted to supervise the clerk's day-to-day functions. Is that, did I muddle that?
And, and having the county manager serve as the clerk, the county clerk under the statute is perfectly allowable and reasonable, is it not?
Yes, ma'am, it absolutely is.
And you can read between the lines as to that.
Yeah, I've just never heard of it.
Yeah.
It's just really weird.
Yeah, well, it was really weird when it wasn't that way, because it almost crippled us several hours.
Does anybody wants to be the clerk?
No, no, we have a clerk. Lexi is the clerk who does the clerical work product, preparing the resolutions and the agendas. But it would be an untenable situation if Lexi or the clerical person took the position that she would only work at the direction of one of the five of us and not at the manager's instructions. And that has happened, and we don't want that to happen again. And that's all I'm willing to say in a public meeting.
Yeah. So we need a motion to approve. Michael action, be the clerk.
Michael will be the designated clerk, but he will not be doing the administrative clerical activities. Lexi will be working, or someone in her stead, will be working at his direction.
I thought we already said all that.
We had already said that, we're just switching David Andrews for Michael for David.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve and designate Michael Silverman as Pender County Clerk of Court in lieu of, uh, county clerk for the Board of Commissioners, to the Board of Commissioners, in lieu of David Andrews.
A motion to second all's in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, so you're, Clark's in for, and he'll designate Lexi as your. And what you have to do is begin in December. This will come back before us in December at the general meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Thank you, Trey, have a good evening and feel better.
You too, thank you, sir.